We have a meeting to order at 7:00 p.m. tonight, September the 16th. We will start with a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. Uh, we have the agenda for tonight as well as meeting minutes from August 19, 2025. Was there anybody that would like to make any amendments or changes to tonight's agenda or to meeting minutes from last month?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda presented?
A second motion.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the agenda I presented. All in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
All opposed? Here. Okay, the next item on tonight's agenda is citizen comments. Some new faces in the audience tonight. Does anybody would like to approach the board with any comments? Okay, without anybody stepping to the podium, we'll move on. Um, as you can see in tonight's agenda, there are no communications. So we'll move right into unfinished business. Uh, first item under unfinished business is the proposed ordinance amendments to Section 84 Home Occupation Regulations. Karen, would you like us, like to take us through, um, what you've supplied in our amendments in regards to home occupation ordinance?
Sure, um, so face, uh, we just said one line of change to the proposed draft based on what last month's meeting. That's gonna be under item, under item number C, Home Occupation Section 2, item number D. There was some talk about what should be classified allowed for commercial vehicles and other type of equipment. So number eight says service activities involving use of a commercial vehicle shall be limited to one such vehicle. Any addition, additional equipment or supplies such as plows or borrowers and open trailers must be stored within accessory building while on the premises or may be stored outside provided there is a six-foot tall screening surrounding the outdoor storage area from adjacent properties. One enclosed trailer may be stored outside without a screen. Moreover, parking where a commercial vehicle must not interfere with the availability of ostrich parking for personal vehicles at the site. So that people can store stuff outside as long as it's screened and if you have an enclosed trailer, you can park it there as well.
Doesn't that still kind of categorize itself in the section, Section 66 Off-Street Parking Requirements? Um, uh, number two, item D, I'm talking about the trailer.
Well, we have to make those further, but this is, um... So yeah, item D would have to be struck, the second four without them. Well, we have to change the language because someone in theory could, I mean, I guess it would... The language there is for home occupations. If you don't have a home occupation, but you have a commercial trailer, we want them to be able to park it there if they never got approved for home occupation. Guess how do we want to, or, or we could say, a commercial trailer?
I think, like, one of the first discussions I remember is, well, you're allowed the truck, but you're not allowed the, the trailer.
Right.
And we talked about whether it was just allowing one trailer, if I remember correctly. Or how, there was a little bit of discussion of that. So 66 is just a general ordinance?
It's just a gen- general ordinance, but whatever changes we make to home occupation and whatever you guys, if you guys want to treat commercial vehicles throughout the residential district, that would have to be updated as well. I don't know, I don't think we were that far in the conversation with this, yeah, but we can, yeah.
We can add some more to it if we do it, right?
I'd love to at least strike the commercial trailer part of D. I don't have the issue, there's, leaving the semi-trailers and really the parking semi-trailers that we should probably go in for home occupation.
So that was the question, if you have home occupation, does that, would it make it easier?
Yeah, that's separate from it. Like this, I think that one just covers if you don't have anything, right?
We'd have to have language stating that, um, referencing both somehow.
That makes sense.
So on number one, for the home occupation regulations, are we ready to finalize that section? Are we happy, are we happy with that? And then when we move on to off-street, like, are we looking at these all as whole, as all three of them? Or are we gonna prove each one individually as we go? Because number one, we've been working on for a while and it looks good and everybody, I think.
Yeah, each, each ordinance section would be approved separately. I mean, it would be approved all of those same public here, but they're all separate. So if you guys are comfortable with home occupations, um, you can move that forward. Um, or at least put it aside for now and focus on the other ones, or...
Yeah, is everybody pretty happy with number one, the first packet?
I'm good with it, the way it's written out.
Yeah, I don't see anything else that...
So then with number two, we just gotta make sure it correlates with number one. But this one we worked on for a while, so I think we're, we're done with that.
So obviously, Karen, you updated, uh, that number eight in Section C. Is there anything else in this that you see that could present problems or issues or discrepancies to other places in, in the ordinance work?
Um, aside, aside from just your general parking, um, I do not, I recommend that whatever we're proposing, whatever we're on the court with, we have the touch of attorney take a look at it. Um, she may have insight on something that might be challengeable, but aside from the ostrich parking portion, I think, I don't see any other potential conflicts at the moment.
Okay, so with that being said, what do we, how do we go, I'll have Christine look at this and review it so that we can take a move forward?
You can, you guys would make a motion that you'd like her to review it, and that would be the next step, that would happen.
No, she, she would have that.
She would provide her opinion on it and then that could be presented hopefully the next meeting.
And we should do that along with the, along with the off-street parking requirements. So that's what the conflicts would be, would be between the two of them. So I prefer we give them both of those as a packet rather than separately.
Yeah, agree.
Just save, I mean, plus it saves them money if she's got a whole, I mean, or not, it just makes space up her time. And then accessory buildings really don't, we can move, if we have to move forward with that, we could. We're not ready to do that one yet, because that one really doesn't affect these two items. If everything would be addressed. So it'd be nice if we could finish up the off-street parking one today.
Um, so in regards to the agenda, is there anything else that, that anybody else would like to bring to the table in regards to home occupation regulations and the proposed ordinance amendments? Should we make individual motions on these and Christine review, at least these first two? Would you give that point with the second one?
Yeah.
Anybody to make a motion for proposed ordinance amendment number, Section 84?
I'll make a motion to send proposed ordinance amendment Section 84 Home Occupation Regulation to the touch of attorney for review to bring back to us for approval.
A motion and a second?
Both second.
A motion and a second to, uh, ask the touch of attorney to review proposed ordinance amendment Section 84 Home Occupation Regulations. All in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
All opposed? Here. Moving on to number two, which is the proposed ordinance amendments for Section 66 Off-Street Parking Requirements. Uh, and had, was there any, any updates or changes to this, Karen, since we spoke last month?
Um, just the, the straight throughs, uh, I just read, so just really, I have number two. I don't, two, and then under two, I don't see. And then part item number D, I mean, if you guys want to allow a trailer, semi-trailer with a lot of that language, or if you wanna say, no commercial trailer, semi-trailers may be a part of any rest of the residential district, um, unless it's a part of an approved home occupation, or, you know, what, how do you guys wanna handle that? Because I know we've had discussions of people who don't own their own business, but maybe trucking for someone and have a vehicle like this, where the expectation is you, you take it home with you and you...
So here's a question, are most of those people contractors, like, do they own their own, I don't know how that works, this is another trucker. Most of the people that I see that, when they have semi-trailers, is it because they're a contractor and they're running an individual truck?
Um, I mean, I'm sure, I have it for various reasons. I know there's some guys that just, they take their truck home because maybe wherever they start off in the morning is closer to their house than their, the yard, so it's just...
So they may not be, they may not have home occupation in that sense.
Yeah.
Um...
Well, and I think, we go back to this, this whole situation. So number two says a single commercial vehicle may be parked outside of a parcel, but then you get to, but ID, it says no commercial trailer, semi-trailer. So now, yeah, you can bring your truck home, your commercial vehicle, but you can't bring its accompanying trailer home with you. It doesn't, it means to me, it doesn't make sense.
And these aren't, so, these are twakers or graders, so they're not small lots. So the question is, do we wanna let them, let's say they're driving for a, whatever company, cost, or whatever. Are we, do we want them to bring the truck and the trailer home to us?
I don't, I don't have any issue personally striking a commercial trailer right off here because that's gonna cover landscapers and, you know, food truck guy or whatever. But the, you know, the semi-trailer, I think we might put a little more discussion into because, yeah, I don't want my neighbors to park their Walmart truck in the driveway. I don't know that it's necessary, we just, just, we, yeah.
So we would leave, basically, we would leave no semi-trailers may be parked in the residential district and we'll get rid of commercial trailers? That's what we're thinking?
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, I think, I think, Karen, do you think you have better to find semi-trails?
Yeah, to, to, to me, like, you're talking like, if you said Walmart trailer, or does it also include a garage? Or, you know, what about, what about a, like, I don't know, I could see a commercial trailer. I agree with what you're saying. Yeah, yeah, I guess when I think semi-trailer, I think, you know, forty-five-foot box trailer.
Yeah. Karen, do you have any insight on how we can word that a little differently? Or is that being too specific in writing an ordinance where you're saying that one type of a commercial trailer would be acceptable or the different type of a commercial trailer would not?
I guess if we can pinpoint what the key concern and difference is about these trailers. Um, because I think if something like that could be easily challenged. If they end up weighing the same, you know, like, what, what's making one thing, uh, more favorable in a residential district than the other, we can't, we don't have anything definitive on that.
What are your other concerns about that area that, anything you can say on that aspect?
Most people on the books typically just say, oh, um, no trailers and semi-trails are allowed to be parked in residential districts. I mean, the, the language you have is pretty common, um, for this area of St. Kirk County and other rural areas around southeast Michigan.
What, what did we already add, going back to the whole occupancy, number two, where you talked about six-foot tall screen? Do you have a question, like, a screen?
Good, if you wanna, if you wanna allow these things, it's the ones we're screening from adjacent properties in the roadway. But I know we had a discussion last week or last month where, uh...
The screen sometimes supports on the trailer, to be depending on, that type of screening.
Well, I just don't wanna get us into something, like you said, where attorney's gonna start inficking, but if somebody, if somebody, Jim wanted to park his Walmart trailer there, he's retired, but over the road trucking that he's doing, if he really wanted to do it that bad, if he didn't afford to build a garden to put it in, well, he could put some type of pines or some type of screen. If it's that important, does that want to match the height of the trailer you're saying? Yeah, or, or is that something where he has to go to his, his neighbors within such and such a distance for approval to do something? And if all those neighbors, who doesn't, says they're fine with it, he can go ahead and do it. I don't know, I'm just trying to...
Right, I know what you mean. I try to float between, because, yeah, I don't wanna over-regulate, but I also used to live next to a junk collector. Right. So, you know, the, allowing certain things does scare me because some, some people will take advantage. Uh, and you wind up with a blank problem that lowers your property value, and I wanna stay away from that, but I also don't wanna tell them. So what you're already can do...
So is there, is there issue with, like, say, say the Walmart trailer, is it the fact that, what if it, what if it left everywhere? What if you just did a whole, runs out, did deliveries, came home after evening, just like, anybody drives a car to a car? Is it that, or is it the fact that?
Well, it's more than likely, so that's gonna have a car there, it's gonna be a, a storage facility. Yeah, that's, I think, I, I, my concern is more with that it sits there, it's grown from a higher lot. Yes. Because those things are fortified, you know, here, it is. Right. And the guy just starts using it as a cheap shed or a built-in tire.
And then his licenses, they did, so it's a second use, so...
Right. Man, why are you just leaving it, I think?
And they have to be complacent.
Yeah, if, you know, or if, if it becomes an issue, if they, you know, start getting fined for it and anger, have come in and talk to the lawyer, and she can say, hey, file for an occupation.
And if they can't file for home occupation because it's, they're not owning their own business, in theory, they should have another place where they can put that, for driving for someone else. I would hope their employer has a space where they could do a part of that job. They present a, like, asking for that.
And realistically, in Casco, we do have numerous, within a close distance, storage lots that allow in and out. I mean, they're not far to go to the corner park, car park, and go for the day. You know, we do have a lot, it's not like we don't have that offer and they're a long ways away. I'm just throwing that out there as part of the thought, you know, in a storage diner for, you know, it turned, it was only three hundred dollars. This is a wide open place years ago, but it's part of the operating of it, you know? So what's everyone think?
I'm going to just leave it, please, unless she has it.
I mean, just stipulate that, um, the commercial trailer, semi-trailer would be parked in a residential district unless it's a part of approved home occupation.
What about...
Because we do allow for open sharing of this, home occupation.
What about the definition, the definition of commercial motor vehicle defined at the top of the page says, letter C, it has a gross combination weight rating or gross combination weight, whichever is greater of twenty-six thousand and one pounds or more, inclusive of towed units with a gross vehicle weight rating or gross vehicle weight whichever is greater or more than ten thousand pounds. So by definition, a commercial vehicle includes a towed unit, which would be the trailer. Right? So if by saying commercial vehicle, it means everything that's defined here at the top of the page, then, then the term commercial vehicle already includes a trailer?
I think item D says those commercial trailers, semi-trails. Right?
Right. Right, letter D says no commercial trailers or semi-trails, but I guess I'm looking at this from possibly legal at the same point. If the definition of commercial vehicle includes a trailer and you say in number two, a commercial vehicle may be parked, a commercial vehicle by definition includes its own trailer. And you're saying a commercial, a single commercial vehicle may be parked outside of a parcel. But then in the, the subletters, you're saying the trailer is not allowed?
Well, I'm defining how the state, up there, that's how the state defines what a commercial vehicle is. Um, you guys define a, I think, commercial vehicle at just, um, the twenty, it's a commercial vehicle that exceeding license gross vehicle weight of twenty-six thousand pounds or a semi-truck tractor. So that commercial motor vehicle information up there is how the state defines it.
It's not an actual part of the ordinance?
It's not, that's, that's not an, the actual part of the ordinance. But you guys can probably further find out who are the commercial vehicle is. So we have to refer to the state.
Right. Well, I mean, we can't pull out our definition because our definition doesn't...
It doesn't lie.
Doesn't lie to the state, which is another reason why that's struck.
I still think we can classify what can be done with trailers and semi-trailers and not conflict with the commercial, what we say you can do for a commercial vehicle. Because we're specifying the parts. That makes any sense?
So is a commercial trailer, would that be?
Because I guess all non-commercial vehicles, but not all commercial vehicles are trailers. Those things, that's specifying commercial trailers, semi-trails aren't allowed, but commercial vehicles outside of that are, as long as they need to be sanctioned, we're okay with that.
Well, I mean, if ever, I, I don't, I don't have any problem with the way it's written. Just, I don't want to, on a, on a trailer thing. Like you said...
I don't think so, so I guess another question would be, has there been any issues with people not being allowed to have their trailer on their property? You know, have any landscapers come down and said they were being harassed by it or anything like that?
Most landscapers with home occupation, they, because they don't give it to themselves, don't they?
They should. Yeah, I guess that's...
And most of the landscapers, I think, bring their apartment, or...
I think that the, the likelihood of somebody wanting to bring home or wanting to bring home a commercial truck and trailer, but not owning that company, is gonna be very, very, you know, unlikely.
But I mean, I mean, by the state definition, a commercial vehicle would cover anybody with a latter trailer. You know, it is gonna be a six-foot U-Haul trailer with this name on it. You know, you might not have run any sort of huge business out of it, it might just be a formal boulder down, but...
Could you reword it to a size? Maybe there's some, I don't know, they go for sizes, so you cut out the forty-foot semi-trailer, but... Well, that's, that's, yeah, could work anyways, forget all that.
You know, I think that's where, I, I was trying to separate that, but I think what she says, you know, if I've got a, a forty-foot, you know, box trailer that I tow, five foot fifty, what makes that different than forty-foot trailer he's towing with a three axle dump?
Yeah, yes.
You know, because he could argue, hey, this guy, the neighbor has a forty-foot trailer, what's the difference of both forty feet? Yeah. Here's what I'm telling them, they both have letters on the side and a business name.
Well, you could also have your, your own race car, you know? Right, and people have a forty-foot close trailer for, for all the race car, right?
Yeah.
And I was thinking, just separate it because it's not a home occupation.
Correct.
But the real issue is gonna be something the neighbor complaining about the side of it, out there with him.
So I guess if, if, if we left it the way it is, and somebody like that, you know, a weekend guy, he's got his equipment on a, you know, race car, whatever, a trailer, and he's got his name on the side of it, and he doesn't fall under home occupation, is there any other out for him?
He could park inside somewhere.
Why can't he say, under the condition of home occupation? He'd have to park inside of the barn, so that it's not, it's not, yeah, but why couldn't he fall under home occupation? If he's not running a business on his house.
That is a... I mean, it's a toy trailer, a big race car, it's not a commercial trailer anyways, so that is exempt from all this.
It's registered in license, yeah, it's prior use. So really, we're following up.
Yeah, it's not considered a commercial vehicle.
Does a semi-trailer have like a DOT box thing like the truck does? Do they have data special for the trailer?
No, no, not at the trailer, it's gotta be played in.
I, I mean, I don't see any reason why we can't leave it the way it is and, I don't care. I just think that the likelihood of, of a true commercial vehicle needing to be brought home by somebody other than the business owner is gonna be...
And if it, if it starts to become an issue and it comes up again, revisit it, right? That's why you're here?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Okay.
So should, we should still send this one to...
We can't, I can, um, I'd say the only thing I would, if you guys want to advance this, just another item D, make reference to less part of approved home occupation. And then again, item G also references, um, to that, um, it, just, if you still, if you're running a business and you have, and you have commercial vehicles, you have to still go through that process. That's the only thing I would, I would add that language to, like, and send it to Chris as well. She may see some other output that, for whatever reason, we're not seeing right now, but...
Uh, I just noticed something else that I read that's wrong with the first one. Letter C, shall be, commercial vehicles shall be parked in the side or rear yard and a distance greater than one hundred feet from the principal building of any neighborhood residence. So that's only the neighborhood residence, it's not the principal building of the, the applicant. Just wanted to make sure that's clear.
And that's something that, uh, is also going to have to be taken into account for the home occupation. If someone wants to park these commercial vehicles outside, it's a, when I, when I, to...
So it has to be a hundred feet away from the house beside it?
The neighbor's.
Your neighbor's house, and you only allow fifteen feet for a, a side thing, that, that would conflict?
That's a minimum, that's a minimum.
I know, but if you have this property, you're not sitting there going right to the, to your house, you can't. You go right to the edge of that line every time you do it, to, and then the neighbors, maybe, whatever, be fifteen, twenty feet off that line. That's a long ways for a this property that's only a hundred and sixty feet wide.
Our standard is.
If I have a hundred and sixty feet wide lot, right, because my, I'm fifteen feet from my edge and a neighbor's say thirty feet from his edge, I'm still lying into his house. So I have to be a hundred feet from that. How do I go?
Parking outside your house?
What if I have my driveway over here?
To a piece of property?
It's a long ways, I'm just saying, for a hundred and sixty feet wide piece of property, a hundred feet is a long ways to go.
And what if you have another neighbor by the other side?
I think that's a, I think that's a good thing, because a smaller piece of property.
It's where it's.
Should be, should be a higher, higher standard.
Two acres, you probably have two hundred foot front, right? Would you have two hundred foot front, John? What's our minimum front, isn't it two hundred?
What's what's minimum front?
I I have to look it up.
Because it goes by, yes, the property is the, it'd be two acres to be deep.
Two hundred.
Yeah.
I think it's it's two hundred feet.
Okay, it's two hundred feet too.
I can try to go look it up.
You basically would be parking in the middle to be away from which does the, that's the part.
But still, a hundred feet is a long ways. You only allow me by law thirty and thirty, so. Or fifteen, fifteen, thirty, the house can be thirty if you park, but now I have this trailer and truck, that's got to be a hundred feet away from the neighbors. I'm just saying that's a long ways, change that rule. I can tell you, my my uh, my garage is fifteen feet away from the edge of the neighbor's. And I guarantee you this house is less than a hundred feet from my garage.
Do you want to back into the semi-truck next to your fence line number nine?
It doesn't, I'm just saying, if you're gonna allow the rule, what's the difference? You can't allow, you can't throw a hundred feet there. If you're gonna say that if my property is this wide, I don't want it to be a hundred feet, you're gonna allow rule, well, well, how do I get a hundred feet away?
There's there's a certain something, I can see. I guess, so I thought, if you only have a hundred feet, your property is too small, can you park in a trailer?
That's the way I.
I used to live in St. Louis shores, we couldn't park anything down there because houses were next to each other, you know, but you have to move out here, you you want to park in some of my.
My house is, I traded three point two five acres, this is, I'm two point five acres.
So if you if you do have.
And I'm still two homes.
So park in some of that.
But I got my trailer parked there, I got a thirty-foot trailer sitting there.
Well, in theory, you you can go by a hundred feet, then you'd have to go farther back.
Yeah, if you're.
Right, so now, it's not neighbors gonna look at the door wall or back windows and look at it.
Right, because you can go back, it's not just parallel.
You can go farther back if you're a hundred feet.
Which is, I mean, which is like, if you're in that situation where you're less than a hundred feet, you go.
Then when you're talking about a truck and trailer like that, it doesn't matter if you're a hundred and fifty feet or thirty feet, then you start that thing up. You're gonna start it up.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say, so a hundred feet's close. You want to straight up a hundred feet, I want to make it like seventy feet. Because you got, you're given, you got fifteen and fifteen, he's allowed to be fifteen from his side, I'm allowed to be fifteen from my side. Just because I built that way and also I got a different job and I got non-parking stupid son later. Maybe, what am I changing? Put driveway on the other side of my house, or my second building.
So what, I mean, what do you want it to be fifty feet? No.
I want it to be seventy-five.
Yeah, somewhere around seventy-five, why is that?
I don't see any difference between seventy-five and a hundred, you still have to park it on the other side of your house.
Well, Amy, if you're talking your minimums, your minimums are, your most likely minimum, two hundred foot.
Right, and that's what it'll build on.
You only have two fifteen, you know, it's like, to get to the center, generally they had one fifteen if your setbacks were only fifteen. So no matter what, that sometimes got to be in the middle, if both people built on their setbacks.
But again, you don't have to park this vehicle in between the two residences, or you could, you could back into your backyard farther, you're a deeper back.
I'm just saying, I wouldn't want that, I would rather have it parked up close to his house.
Because you can't see the vehicle.
That's what I think. Where a vehicle normally would be parked.
Right.
If I'm living out in a castle township in a London country, I want to go out and see park fields or forests or whatever, I don't want to look at a truck and trailer. But if you want.
I'm just saying, lower, lower than maybe seventy-five feet or two, there's no difference between a hundred and seventy-five and seventy-five feet to go. Right?
One hundred and forty, seventy-five.
Oh, it makes a difference, seventy-five feet would be just the same as a hundred.
I mean, I know we're splitting hairs, sooner or later, this is going to come up. I mean, I used to be aggressive at that point. You try, you have to have every problem.
Right, right.
Yeah, can you solve one here or put up another? I'm comfortable with seventy-five. Something else?
Well, again, you know, to keep in mind, I mean, you're talking about the vehicle only, not the trailer, because the next letter says you can't have a trailer, so. You know, it's not a matter of of where this huge trailer is going to go, it's just the vehicle itself.
The vehicle could be a large truck, that could be.
In theory.
In theory, for your people on here. Because it doesn't have a trailer, which is fine, so. I'm comfortable with keeping number D to change to C at seventy-five, if everybody else agrees.
Good.
And then having Christine review this compared to number one, see if it conflicts.
Anything on that, Karen?
Okay, not good.
I have a motion, no, it's done, this is Karen, or Christine, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion to. The proposed ordinance of section sixty-six off street parking requirements be sent apparent for legal approval. With Christine, I'm sorry, with the change with item C, being changed to seventy-five feet from the principal building. And adding to section D. The noting of unless this is part of a home occupation.
Most likely not.
Motion of the second for the proposed ordinance section sixty-six to go to review for the city attorney, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, carry. Okay, last one we have is the proposed ordinance amendments to section sixty-five, which is accessory buildings. In particular, letter J, which covers shipping containers. Karen, will you take us to this one?
Yeah, so these changes are based off the conversation we had, um, last month. And it's not like you guys were open to having, um, shipping containers in maybe industrial and agricultural district. Um, subject to some conditions, so I kind of updated the ordinance. Um, to basically say they're still prohibited except provided in this section because it's only applying to to many zoning districts. So shipping containers may be used as a, as accessory, should put accessory buildings. Or accessory structures in the industrial and agricultural zones subject to the following conditions. Um, one compares may, must be a solid color, low-mating, free of rust holes, which are clean. Two, stacking above one container, because I don't know what. Three, must only district setbacks, setback rules apply. Four, containers must be placed in the rear or side area of the main structure. Five, no plumbing connections are permitted. Six, hazardous materials, that is still a seven. Seven, placement of them required, parking when moving areas are prohibited. Eight, containers must be off wheels slash trailers instead of on the ground. And I say living quarters, the containers are not allowed.
So, okay, thank you, I misunderstood, uh, some of this, but I thought we also had talked about doing this in in, um. Residential district based on the size of lot, I guess it's not going to fit everywhere, but. If you live in residential, you'll still have two or four, five acres. Along, you know, a baby shipping container or something to that nature.
What limit were you guys thinking?
In terms of?
Size of the lot.
Your minimum lot size for all residential zones, except for, um, manufactured homes is two acres. So in theory, if it was, if the minimum was two acres, then it could probably allow almost anywhere there was, wasn't a, a residential lot. If you're okay with that, you can do that.
Okay.
Acres are minimum of five. And so if you're thinking more, five or more, we can specify that.
I mean, I I don't see any reason why if somebody follows all these rules, even if they had two acres, that they, that this should be permitted. That's just my opinion.
I have a problem just to talk about, I think number seven. I would prefer if it says that are directly on the ground, on some type of a solid surface. Being that gravel or cement, I don't think it should be put under, like that just gives, it forces somebody that's going to have one. To do a little extra work and a little extra money into maintaining and putting on a correct surface. Because if you just throw it under, it's gonna rot, it's gonna get pests, so I would prefer that, you know, a solid surface. And I do think there definitely has to be a limit on this, we don't have a limit. So whether that be by acreage, I mean, I don't have thirty of them on my neighbor's property. I have no problem maybe if they wanted to, but we have to determine acreage and amount for. Maybe so many acres, you're gonna be allowed to have one or two. Maybe certain acreage, uh, one, and then you're allowed two, and you're up to a maximum of three, and that's all you're ever allowed, or whatever the rest of the term. I don't know what those numbers would be, but I would like to see something, not just unlimited.
Let's see, I know those ones, they'll be a little bit better.
Yeah, I I agree, I do think that we need to have a a limit on how many. Um, that that could go with.
The acreage on something.
Be first. Yeah. Zero, five, one. Five, I think, oh, two, something like that, I think is reasonable, if you need more.
I have, if you never need more than two.
If you need more than two shipping containers, it's kind of a bill of our, our expenses.
Yeah.
You know, we don't allow it there.
But I, but I think if we're at two, two to five acres. For the first one. Five plus for the second. Because you can't, I have lots smaller than two, right, anyway.
Well, I can tell you this, though, if if you really want to get super technical about it, the minimum lot size in the township is two acres, but I know there's lots in the township that are divided at one point eight eight. I don't know if that's just a technicality, but. I think to put in, make two acres, then some of them, I don't know, these one point eight eight lots and they are now dislocated.
Yeah, my old, my old St. Louis township was like one point nine four.
Right.
So are you saying not one or two, or or one or two?
I think one and a half acres to five acres is one.
But somehow, you, I mean, not, I never. People have, you don't want people putting in mobile home either, you know.
Right, as I said, of course, you got, some of that, that's a totally different district too. If you say, uh, residential district, that does not include the mobile home district.
It does include, we have to specify exactly what district, so you can say the ag or one or two. And industrial, do you want any of the business districts, or do you think those lots are just too small?
Business districts, any lots.
What's like the name?
What's that, that's like.
Do you want to be two? You can have an acre and be a B two minimum.
What do you even fall under, under the neighbor market?
A handful of them, but they're there.
When you say, I get commercial.
They're commercial.
The time would be.
What's that?
Can't see where.
Can't see it?
Well, I can see one.
Did your guys mark it as a, a salvage in the entire, the whole entire storage?
Yeah, yeah. They've been like that forever, I don't know if you can fix that.
That was, okay.
That's a little better.
Yeah.
That's much better. Um, so like the office building or something would be allowed too, and you're talking, so.
I mean, we, it depends on how we want to specify, do we want to allow it in all districts? Or do we want to specify just these ones?
I think.
I I think, I think you specify, I think you have to look at, what is the principal use of the property? Commercial building. An industrial, if in an industrial building, you're gonna have a need for these types of things, and you have a need for it. The larger residential lots, you have a need for it. If you live in the, in a trailer park or you are in a business district, I I don't see you have a need for it, I mean. Or you don't want to have a whole space for it.
Can't have it, right, I don't care if it's needed or not.
Right.
I don't think they should be able to have it.
Not, well, I think a lot of it is too small.
Can you do one point five enough?
I think you just call it a district.
Yeah, call it the districts.
And then you can convert size to the second one, right?
Yeah. Five acres to.
What do you, what do you think is the best way to end a word, that Karen?
Um.
Is it five districts?
Yeah, I'm just specify what districts are allowed. So if you were in, up, anywhere outside of the districts, you knew, you couldn't use it as a permanent accessory structure. You might still be able to use it for the temporary uses. Um, has a lot of township, but if you want to use it as a permanent accessory structure, you couldn't. Unless you're in your industrial, your ag, or one and or two.
And then I need to put a thing in there that says a limit of one. If you're greater than.
Do a chart.
Five acres.
Limited, shipping container should be limited by acreage according to this chart.
You guys can handle your property.
Nothing we don't. I'd like to.
Like just, yeah. How many acres you should have?
Our, our commercial property is kind of.
And how many you think you should be able to have?
See, and I mean, I think we need to limit, but in real, in in reality, the way that our property is set up, if a tree line cuts through the bill, I could put twenty over the back and you'd never see them. You know what I mean, they don't have a zero impact on the surrounding neighbors or anything of that nature, but. Again, our, yeah, our, our block is different than than others, you know?
Yes, you have to take into consideration. How many acres?
Ten.
I mean, you could do one and five, plus one, five percent is two, ten plus.
I think at a certain point, you can, you have to build a building or something.
That's not good enough.
Do you think three would be enough on seven acres or one? Hold up three and then go from there.
I like, it's not fun, repeat that.
So one point five to five, you would be allowed one. Five to ten, it would be allowed two, ten plus two would be allowed three. And that's the max, that we're allowed on any property.
Build a building.
So.
Right.
And they have to be, and they're in, on a foundation, on a solid surface, gravel.
I don't want to say it's a combination.
Does that include gravel, like, I'm not probably gravel. Those necessarily.
No, I think double chest, I think if we're using, you could go on, but if a structure is of a certain size, we could go to the cook kitchen and they need to have.
Yeah, but if they're gonna say put them on, he's gonna say put them on a foundation, right, more dense.
They can.
And people are not gonna want to do that.
So they're not building, they're their own structure, there's no. They're not really.
So you want solid, you want to say solid surface, or do you want a.
Gravel or solid surface, some type of gravel or something, I mean, I think that's what I'd add would be nice.
There's no reason to come and put it on a gravel base.
I just don't want it on dirt, where there's gonna be leaks, it's still a leaky gravel, you know, like that. You know what I'm saying?
Which requirement for like a business, and they have gravel on that, what is that gravel called? They have that, that name for it, right? That's in the, the zone we.
Um, limestone?
I don't know if it's limestone or what it is, but it's gotta be certain, it's gotta have, you know, a certain, kind of base to it. They can't, they can't just say whatever.
Right.
Okay, if we have that, I'm happy with that.
So make some, make some modifications and then bring it back.
So Karen, Dan, Dan and I kind of followed something, Karen, and Dan makes a good point. We have previously permitted the use of shipping containers as a foundational structure of a hoop building. So long as it was not used internally for storage, because. So long as it was not used internally for storage, because that would prohibit it, then it would be not a conformant. If we make this change, I think we also need to, somehow put language in here that says that this would, these, the number of containers, would be limited to these numbers that we put in place regardless of what it's used for. Because we don't want someone to put two containers on a property and say, well, these two are for my foundation of my structure of my hoop building, but then these other two are for my, my storage. And I'm not gonna put, you know, now they found a hoop hole to put four on the property, and then, you know, then the, the hoop building falls down five years, and then we put it back up and now they have four containers. So, in theory, if this amendment is re-registered, the way they were proposing, they could use those containers for the foundation of their hoop building, but then they could also use the inside for storage, that would no longer be an amendment. So then we could still keep the limit of one, two, or three.
Yep.
It's got two of them, and they're tied along, and they're stored in a trunk, which we wouldn't see.
There you go.
It's the end of the building, but it's here. And it was pretty, and they had a big solid picture house, and they put nice green trees around it. Just saying, that would be weird, shouldn't it? We'll see if that's what happens.
Okay.
I think they'll clean up some of the ones that are there, too. Because instead of going to somebody and saying, you need to get rid of these, where they've got stuff that can't get rid of them, now it's like, okay, you can keep them, but you're gonna clean them up, and you're gonna put them on some type of a nicer foundation, and then, nobody has to do graffiti or whatever, it's all over.
Okay, so we will revisit that next month, as the language in that proposal is updated. Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda would be moving into new business, which. Uh, so the, the, the next item, new business, is the joint workshop with the township planner, as well as the township board trustees, the planning commissioner, and the zoning board appeals members. I don't know how we're.
Close that meeting first, or?
No, but I told you, I'll.
So we're just gonna be part of it, and we're just moving on, so they just join us?
Yeah.
So a bunch of you guys, uh, ZDA members, that are on a table.
Karen, you wanna start as well?
Sure.
Karen on the table, who we are, or what, what part you're part of.
Sure, so I guess I'll start, because Karen, we're, I'm your planning consultant. Um, I work with Castco for probably the last four or five years in some capacity, and I've been a planning consultant in communities for probably the last ten years. Um, and I mostly communicate with the planning commission, sometimes I'm involved with the ZDA, and I'm always talking to either Brenda or Joe about some internal things. Kelly, wanna go next?
Kelly Silver, treasure.
May I see your calendar, please?
Matt Deech, on board of appeals, deputy supervisor. President Roskies on the board of appeals. Uh, Jimmy Wolf, ZDA.
Sukhakat's planning commission.
John Secroway, planning commission.
Deanna Ho, planning commission.
Jim Edwards, planning commission, and ZDA.
Bill Johnston, planning commission.
Alright, um, well, thanks very much, um, coming off tonight, especially if this isn't your typical, um, commission meeting. Um, the purpose of this training session is to kind of serve as a refresher of how to run and affect a couple of meetings, um, that's for the property consistently to carry. Um, this is mostly focused on, uh, planning commission, I think these topics are relevant to all public boards. Um, so kind of just gonna be going over some basics, you know, what should be doing before a meeting, some things to keep in mind when you're opening a meeting, looking at your agenda, having those certain applications, deliberations, decisions, and lastly, public comments. Um, so again, first hand, what should you be doing before a meeting? Um, I know it's pretty basic, I don't know if you guys know this, but it really is important to review your material, it's not only to be aware of what's on the topic that day, but also, um, you know, the more prepared you are for the meeting, um, it's better, I would prefer you to basically ask more effective questions, maybe more effectively be able to raise your concerns about you have about a certain, um, case. Um, again, the more time you have to look over stuff, you might be able to ask some questions, whether it's from Brenda, or me, or someone else, if you get some of those questions answered, maybe even, uh, before the meeting, if you have, if you're confused about some stuff. Um, and most importantly, avoid experts in communications, that basically means one-on-one conversations between you, the applicant, maybe opponents of the applicant. If someone wants to discuss a case to you as a commissioner, you can listen, but if you can't answer, I would really avoid it at all costs, you can say, look, I'm a planning commissioner, I'm serving on a public board, and any discussion that I have about this really has to take place at a public meeting, I'm sorry. Um, that's really important to do, especially in like social media, and you know, as a commissioner, people are gonna wanna ask you questions, and whether how you feel about something, they ask you, are you gonna vote on this or that, and you need to say, so find out on the meeting, you know, what's going on, you should be doing.
I got a question on your materials, so when the materials should be, when, when should we receive the materials?
You guys typically receive materials about a week before. Sometimes earlier, maybe something happens a little bit later, but your meetings are on Tuesday, you should definitely have those materials over the weekend. Um, you know, most communities do stick to that one rule, and we understand things come up. Maybe you were out of town, you don't take your package till the day, uh, these things happen. But there are a lot of, there are some commissions that I go to, where a lot of planning commission members do voice, and it's not you guys. They say, this is the first time I can see any of this stuff tonight. And, um, you know, I, we always have things come up in life, but as an applicant, that doesn't make you feel good. And maybe as a member of the public who's really concerned about this, that also might not make you feel good. So the more prepared everyone can be, I think the more trust everyone has in the process. Um, so opening a meeting, the chairperson is typically the one who should be leading the meeting, and for whatever reason, they're out, they call to the vice chair, the vice chair's out. Um, you gotta look at your bylaws, but if it falls to the secretary, and so on and so forth, the chairperson or the public on all permissions to even have a meeting. Um, but all meetings must be scheduled ahead of time, typically on your regular meetings, that schedule's posted whenever you guys decide to approve that schedule. If for whatever, if something ever happens where you schedule a public meeting, but that notice never goes out, it doesn't make the paper, or, um, you know, it's not posted in time, that meeting can occur. So all meetings have to be scheduled ahead of time, and follow whatever proper posting procedure they need to have in order to occur. Um, all of the meetings must follow parliamentary procedure. Um, everyone typically follows that Robert's Rules of Order. If you ever look at a long time, it doesn't hurt to refresh it. No community uses it absolutely perfectly, but again, people are making motions, you second the motion, um, you have discussions, stuff like that. So I'd say, it probably would lose a commissioner to rush on up on it every, every once, every two years. Um, and all open meetings must have forums open. If you don't have enough planning commissioners, fully, you can't have a meeting. Um, I've run into situations where you might have enough planning commission members to open a meeting, but then when it comes back for a public hearing, one of the commissioners has to call back, and it's not public interest. Well, what do you do? You're scheduling this public hearing, but now one of the commissioners is gone. Can you still have a public hearing? Yes, you should still have a public hearing, but it needs a state. We don't have forums, so while we can take public comment on this issue, and we can have informal discussion about it, we can't make any funding decisions on this. A lot of times what they'll do, the communities will do is they'll hold the public comment period, because a lot of people show up that day to talk about it. That you can receive their comments, typically the applicant will ask, can I postpone till you guys have a forum before I get my presentation? And, um, if that person chooses to do that, I would go along with it and say sure, because I don't have a very detailed process. Um, we've run into a situation in one township where they had a public hearing scheduled, and we didn't even have a forum for the meeting, and a lot of people showed up for the public hearing. That was the case where fortunately, we couldn't even hold a public comment period, because there wasn't even enough commissioners to open the public hearing. So what do you do then? You inform everyone, sorry, we can't have a public hearing today, we're being recorded in the meeting. If anyone would like to come up and speak, you may, but we're just letting you know, we can't record any comments right now, because we're really not allowed to open the meeting. And the public got it, they basically just said, well, when are we gonna find out when the public hearing is? And they said, likely be at the next meeting, um, but stay informed with the township. And there's typically enough notice to the community to be aware of when the public hearing would actually take place. Um, a rare situation like something, something like that has occurred this year.
The, the side of the forum for like the, for planning commission, we have seven, do you have to have a certain amount?
It should stay in your bylaws.
Yeah.
Exactly, so here, for some communities, it's five.
And the ZDA has five, what's, what, what's, should we have to have three?
Yeah. The one thing, ZDA, you, you do have an alternate. So the alternate, if some committee's an alternate, uh, fills up.
Yeah.
In general, let's say if there's five individual numbers, the, the alternate's still ten, they get paid, but they, I need them, the exposure to the C's.
Yeah.
Why doesn't the planning have a alternate?
Because, um, it's quasi judicial, it's one where appeals, if you get turned out, and you could appeal to super appeals.
Okay.
Like the board of review also has alternate, because you could, um, you could, um, appeal to see tax fraud. Planning commission gets turned out, it turns out, there's no appeal process.
Okay.
Um, so at our meeting, you guys get an agenda, and typically the agenda's even posted online, too, for the public, so they may be aware of, of what's gonna be discussed at the meeting. Um, it's really important to stick to your agenda, because it serves as a guide for commission members, as well as sets the expectation of what the public knows is gonna be discussed at the meeting. Typically, at the beginning of your meetings, you guys approve the agenda, you make any, a lot of times that's usually when, um, you can make modifications, it's like to move topics around, you totally can do that. Um, if something happens after you approve your agenda, and it, it probably be rare, but if a topic comes up that you feel strongly that you should add to your agenda, um, it is possible to add it to the agenda after you approved it, you just need a two-thirds vote to be in favor of it, to do so. Um, I was recently at a planning commission meeting where, um, they had discussed the previous one, oh, we're gonna talk about this one thing at next month's meeting. Next month's meeting rolled around, we had a new add-in, they forgot to add to the agenda, planning forgot it until like in the middle of the meeting. And they're like, oh, we said we were gonna discuss this thing, and there was a new stack over there, completely shutting down, saying, oh, no, you can't mess with your agenda, you've already approved it. So everyone backed off, and after the meeting, I was like, is that really true? And I looked it up, and no, like, you totally can change it, it's probably gonna be a rare instance where that happens, but you do have the power to modify it after approval. So we're gonna go over, um, some key aspects of common applications that planning and the zoning board will look at. Uh, the first one we're gonna do is we're gonna look at site plan review. Uh, this includes all your, typically I would say that you're permitted, not, usually non-residential uses in your district. So we're talking about usually commercial, and those are really about when I cast the township, and occupations, like on occupations. Um, in local occupations, it's all in separate review, it's not a site plan review. Um, site plan reviews do not have a public hearing. Um, people can come up during your public comment period and comment how they feel about the application, but, um, they don't have their own separate public hearing and public comment section as a part of the meeting. Um, if a site plan meets all the district requirements and all the use requirements, as a planning commission, you must approve it. That's what it is. Um, when we come to special land use, it's basically a site plan review with special criteria you look at, and as a planning commission, you also have the power to put special conditions on it, so long as they're reasonable. Um, this does require a public hearing, so typically in Casco, you guys do have a, when you come to that, uh, special land use, uh, item on your agenda, typically open the public hearing for it, and allowed to take public comments for it. If someone wants to comment on it during the general public comment period, they totally can. Typically, when you do have a public hearing, um, at a meeting, um, you can remind people during the general public comment period, we're having the public hearing later for this item. Um, so we ask that you hold your comments for that. If someone doesn't understand, or basically don't wanna say during the general public comment period, they can. Um, that's fine, too.
So, uh, well, special land use then is, because they're deviating from our requirements, correct?
It can, because you still look at all the zoning boards, you look at the district requirements, that, the use requirements for that specific use, but then you have that special land use criteria that brings in, is it a character of the neighborhood, is it gonna change traffic down the street? And I would say, that's more subjective criteria. And you can be influenced by the public, if they say, hey, this is really gonna change everything about our neighborhood, um, you can totally take those comments into account, we should be taking those comments into account for your decision making.
So, starting, in with what he said, site plan review, if it meets all the requirements, we, we, we approve it. It's black or white, we have to approve it.
Yeah.
I always thought, like, special land use is something you're giving above and beyond.
Yes.
So if you have ten neighbors all surrounding that property, and nine of them do not want it, even though it meets it, we still have the right to say it doesn't work?
You still have the right to say, it can meet all the district requirements, it can meet all the requirements for good use, but in a situation like that, it sounds like it might not, if the neighbors are all against it, then you might have to look at, is it really meet the character of the area, is it gonna be destructive, is it gonna increase traffic? You have all these general qualifiers that I think you can apply, um, whatever the public's telling you. You can incorporate that in just whatever decision you're making, you have to make sure that you're having facts to back up whatever it is. And also with the special land use, if the plan, if the application process doesn't specifically require, um, some information, but you feel that that information is pertinent to your decision, you can ask the applicant for it. Like, there's a lot of special land uses, we don't ask for a traffic study or a noise study, but if the neighbors are concerned about it, and it seems reasonable that this use could cause something like that, and you want that information, you can ask the applicant, hey, um, do you think you provide us a traffic study or a noise study? They're not obligated to do it, but if that's a significant aspect in making your decision, you can ask for it, and, um, your decision can be made on whether they were able to provide that or not. So, um, special land use, you're, again, you're supposed to be taking community comments into account. You can ask for more information if it's reasonable, and, um, you can also place reasonable condition and timing. And you can also place reasonable condition and timing. Like limit their hours of operation or other aspects of that business or where things are placed on that site for that use. So you do have you already to do those things. Unless for whatever reason, the planning ordinance says you don't for whatever aspect that is. Rezoning, that's when an advocate comes in and they want to change the zoning of a particular piece of property, that goes to planning commission and it just requires a public hearing. Typically, those who look at, how does this request? How is it, how is it compatible with the surrounding properties? And does it align with the next requirement? Sometimes you run into a situation where the zoning they're requesting, it does align with what some neighboring properties are, especially, you know, if times are in a decision from one district to another and they basically just kind of on a hop to fence and go the other way. But if it doesn't exactly match what the master plan says, that's okay. You know, as planners, we try to align communities, you know, the master plan serves as a guide. And lucky for you guys, you just updated your master plan. I think it's really relevant. You guys were really engaged and did a good, I think you guys did a really good job at looking at various, various of the community. That one was an issue where someone said, oh, the master plan is 20 years old and the community's really changed around them. And, you know, someone wants to change the zoning and maybe, you know, from the, you know, south of the property, maybe it's old business and that's like a residential property. And it's probably not going to get developed into a residential property because it's a rental business. The master plan was like, oh, that one's property, we envision it staying residential because the plan is 20 years old. Some communities really get concerned about that. I mean, it all depends on the situation, but just always remember the master plan's a guide when it comes to rezoning and it can support a decision. But ultimately, you're really looking at part of the characters of the surrounding properties.
Uh, rezoning, that goes to the board for approval.
Yes, the planning commission makes a recommendation. The board, yeah, the board will ultimately, do you guys send it to the county first? And then?
Yeah.
And then you guys get, uh, the county recommendation on it and you guys will ultimately make a decision on it. Oh, and then, so for CPA, CPA will typically do review variance applications. This also requires a public hearing. Essentially, variance is an applicant asking, hey, can I have an exception to one of the zoning ordinance rules? And CPA will only grant dimensional variances. Let's say someone needs 20 parking spaces, but they can only provide, you know, 18 or 16, you know, maybe they can deal with variance. I don't know, because you do, it would say, maybe they before, maybe they wouldn't. Let's say someone is supposed to be 30 feet away from the property and they're asking for 25 because maybe they really don't have absolutely footage elsewhere. Maybe they're not 25, stuff like that. They, typically, they determine if following the zoning ordinance perfectly would cause the applicant some personal difficulty or imperfection. That's typically the criteria that they look at. You know, and every person can also go for the ZDA if they disagree with zoning interpretation, you know. So depending on what it is, whether it's an internal review or a decision made by another board, depending on that decision is, someone could go to the ZDA and ask for what their interpretation is if they believe that the decision was wrongly made based on whatever the previous approver was, they interpreted the zoning ordinance wrongly. So then, after you typically listen to the applicant and any staff or consultant reports, and if there's a public hearing, listen to the public. When you're done with the public hearing, close the public hearing and then typically start your deliberations. You know, first and foremost, try to decide, do I even have enough information to make a decision? Again, if there's a special land use, you feel like you need more information or a traffic study, sound study, whatever, you can ask for that. If someone submitted a site plan and let's say it was like 75% complete, but we're still missing information on setbacks or landscaping, you can say, hey, well, you don't have enough information to make a decision tonight. And again, those that follow the zoning ordinance. If it's a site plan and it's not meeting an aspect of the zoning ordinance, it's either on the applicant to make a change to meet it or they also make sure to tell them, I'm presenting a thesis, I'm not changing anything. You can direct them out as, by commission, you can only follow some ordinance. That's when you can advise them to go to the ZDA, see if they can get a variance worth thing. And if it's a public hearing, where's the community thing? And based on the community's concerns, are you able to gather more information about it? And how does the applicant's facts align with the community?
Making it more direction than the public hearing part of it? So if we weren't on this stuff, how about?
Okay, so that. So when you guys decide to make your decisions, first and foremost, you gotta decide where your facts support your decision. If the site plan meets all the district criteria and the zoning ordinance criteria, again, you guys should approve it. In order to make a decision, a motion must be made, have a second in order to receive votes. Someone makes a motion and no one seconds it, that motion dies. And so, guys have to essentially keep making motions until they get a second before you can move forward with it. I was at a planning commission meeting two months ago. Four motion were made and none of them got a second. And ultimately decided to postpone it and wait till following month to make a decision on it. The motion must be, must clearly state the findings of facts according to the decision to approve, approve conditions or deny an application. Last year, there was a case, J.S. Beck, from L.L.C. Jersey County, township of Northville. Basically, what happened was special land use came in and the planning commission decided to deny it. And they just said, we deny it because you don't meet the special land use criteria. And that's it. And so, the applicant basically said, you don't have enough facts to support your denial. So ultimately, it was mission to pre-report. And the judge pulled in favor of the applicant. And basically told the applicant, you can go reapply. And I don't know what the ultimate outcome of that case would actually have between the applicant and Northville, but since then, all planners are telling the commission members now. This is pretty common. You know, you guys either just approve it or you deny it, say, hey, it doesn't meet the special land use criteria. We now have to really state why it doesn't meet it. Some of it is still suit, but we, all, all communities have to work more on stating what the facts are for denial so that if it is challenging your decision, I'd say it's a bit more solid than just saying, for the night, because it doesn't meet special land use criteria. I know it sounds cumbersome. Do you have to go through each individual item? No, I, like, especially if you're, you can make a blanket statement saying, we approve because it meets all the, you, all, all criteria, the C, the secret district, or the two district, for the use and, you know, and for the use of the special land use. You can specify it needs the district requirements. It needs all the use requirements and by that is a character of the neighborhood. But like, go through all the criteria and state it. And if you're denying it, there are probably maybe one or two or maybe three items that they don't need. And you have to specifically state what it is and by what the facts are. And if the facts are, we've had 10 committee members come out and have told us that this is, you know, going to really impact traffic and not able to take it for the neighborhood. Incorporate that into your motion, so have it on record.
Karen, talking about the, when you said the motion must be made and have a second and then receive the majority vote. Is there, does it have to, I know sometimes I've seen a motion being made, then seconded, and then further discussion. Is there, is that?
Typically, what happens, so a motion to follow strict parliamentary procedure. A lot of times what happens is you guys have a big discussion. Someone makes a motion, someone seconds it, and then it does, you roll call. That's how most communities do it. In theory, you could, you should be able to follow parliamentary procedure strictly. You should have a motion, have a second. And then the chair says, is there any discussion? And if there's no discussion, then you can move on to a call. Because there, you really only have one motion on the table at a time. If someone makes a motion and someone seconds it, if the chair says, is there any discussion? And someone wants to make a different motion, you can't do that. So that's something to keep in mind.
And that's, that's where I was getting at, that part of the boards where people would rush to make a motion, whether they knew they had support or not, get the support. Somebody else may have a motion and the chair will move for vote right away.
Yeah.
Without having any further discussion for somebody else to speak up and say.
That's a good point, yes. And to follow, to better follow parliamentary procedure, should, someone make a motion, should have a second. The chair should say, any discussion? And if you guys are all talked about, it's appealing, you can talk about it for the last 20 minutes. You don't have to say anything more. If it's quiet, then I think it's understood, let's move forward with this. But then you can still vote on it and still die, so.
Karen, is it permissible for the planning commissioners or the ZDA to refer to you? So for clarification, just make sure everything's in the motion?
Yes. Yeah, sometimes, sometimes we might even have to ask whoever's recording the meeting to, whoever's begging it, you know, who said what? Did we do this? Did we close this? You know?
I mean, close a motion that doesn't move forward? You just say, taking it off the table or?
I mean, someone who makes a motion, in theory, you can take it off. You know, that's the question, I'm not sure. If, I mean, if you get a motion and it receives a second, you have a discussion and you guys disagree with it, um.
You can vote no.
You still vote no on it. And if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass.
And then you go back and reapply the new one?
Well, if the, the motion doesn't pass.
So?
Yeah, I understand what you're talking about, you know, in terms of motion seconded, had a discussion. But then that discussion could lead to a motion change.
You can change the motion. And it's not a change after the second.
The person who originally.
Who originally made the first motion.
Would to make the change.
Or, or they could draw in somebody else to speak.
This is why it's really great to brush upon parliamentary procedure because to be honest, this is, I may pop a little bit. Not exactly, trying to remember how it goes. Typically, I think someone made a motion, it's been seconded, there's been discussion or maybe someone's like, hey, you should add these conditions like the special land use. Or if they want to clarify something, yes, the original motion maker can modify it.
And that's have to be resetted and then go to vote.
So now we get to public comment period. So everyone should know that if they want to attend a meeting, they all have rights to speak. And what can we regulate? To be honest, not a lot. All we can do is regulate time for each individual. What can we not regulate? We can't regulate the overall public comment period. If you decide to have to take public comments for three minutes and there's a hundred people, each person's entitled to three minutes. You gotta go through every person who wants to speak. There's been some planning commission meetings I've gone to where public comment period's going on for an hour, maybe hour and a half. And someone says, hey, guys, we really need to wrap it up. We can't say anything, we can't be saying anything to any people like they can't speak. Because that's it, or you can say, there's really not much to do. You gotta let everyone have to speak. Everyone's entitled to speak once. They don't necessarily have the right to go up again. A lot of communities sometimes say, hey, if we have time, if we allow it, someone maybe would go up and speak again if they'd like. Or I mean, I always encourage if someone, if a group of people wants to have a spokesperson to speak for them, they may be allowed to. We cannot regulate the content of what they're saying. If someone, I've seen this at a lot of planning commission meetings. There's a meeting, there's going to be a public hearing on the application later. Someone comes up during the general comment period and wants to speak about the application. And they say, oh, wait for the public, for the public hearing for that thing. It's fine to remind them that, but they can still say it at the general comment period. I think a lot of people, they want to say what they want to say when it's in their head, they don't have the time, it's all right. So as soon as they get it out, and I feel better about it, so just let them talk. If someone comes up and they go to a planning commission meeting and it's planning on schoolgirls, schoolmen, just let them talk, you know. We can't really, we shouldn't regulate what their comment is, even if it's not necessarily relevant or maybe they're speaking, they're confused about what board meeting they're at or, because they might not be. They might just want to share what they think about the community and want everyone else to be aware and possibly concerned about it too. You cannot ask them, we, we can ask them what their name is and maybe where they live, but we can't require it or don't think of it. You can ask for it if they say, I don't want to tell you. Just let them talk.
But also, they don't have to provide any details?
They have to, they can.
But I think we ask for that specifically.
We do ask for it. A lot of communities ask for it and a lot of people get it. It's good for public comment period if they are concerned about, I want you to report my comment, then it helps them if they want to look at the record, that their name's on there when they said. So if they question why, you may tell them, well, if you want your comment to be part of the record, that will help you identify that your comment was taken. But if they wish to not give it, you don't have to.
What about, what about speaking from the podium?
You can ask them to do that, yes. But if they choose not to, I would highly encourage, it depends on the situation.
If any people were speaking all over the spot.
You can ask them to come to the podium. You can ask them to do that. I would say that's something that you can encourage. We can encourage respectful language. We can encourage welcome habits. We can tell, again, you know, we can tell them, you have three minutes. Please come to the podium, state your name. If everyone's expecting what's going to happen and how it's going to do and how it's going to proceed, I think most people will agree to do so. That's not allowed. You can't have threats or abusive language and you can't have disruptive behavior. So if people aren't coming to the podium and they're just shouting in the chair, you can say, we're not, we can't take that. That's disruptive behavior. If you want to talk, come to the podium. So I would say that was a welcome sort of behavior. Remember, public comment period is supposed to be a listening session only commissioner may be answering questions or conversing with the audience or characters. This is probably the hardest thing for every community. I have some community that work for where they're pretty good about it. Half of the year, and then the other half the year. It's hard. Sometimes people coming up, they have questions, they're going to have to answer. It's something as simple as that. But I think if at the beginning of any public comment period, we're able to communicate to the audience, this is just a listening session for us. We are not going to be able to, we're not supposed to be answering questions or providing feedback on the comments tonight, we're just here to listen.
But sometimes they're not speaking truth, they don't, they don't.
That's hard to hear. It's hard to.
It's hard to, and the, uh, the whole thing and then wait till after to correct it.
Well, you don't have to, you don't have to say anything. If you guys want to make, if you guys want to speak about the comments that have been said, you should do it after the public comment period. That's when you can address some of these items. But again, it also just draws out how long the public comment period goes for. If every speaker comes up and they're expecting, I'm going to have a conversation with you guys. You know, it really limits how long they should be up there because they're talking for a minute and a half and what you're saying, your games are supposed to be a minute and a half and that cuts off their time. So I would say if you want to correct stuff, if you want to provide information after the public comment period, do it after everyone has spoken. And then you can say, we read X, Y, and Z, the facts are A, B, and C. But a lot of times, you know, it's really recommended to just listen during the public comment period. How do we escalate to different type of situations? And set the tone for public comments by stating the rules and expectations. Again, it's definitely not for public comments, by stating the rules and expectations. Actively listen, don't assign conversations or talk back. If now there's a comment, don't argue, you can say stuff like, thank you for your input, or I understand where you're coming from. Redirect respectfully, you know, if someone's complaining about what their neighbor's doing, you can say, hey, let's stick to agenda item, or, you know, hey, let's stick to planning related topics, or we're here, we're here, we're here to concern and we'll get to it. Again, remind commenters of the rules, we have three minutes time for every speaker.
Oh, we gotta drag that three minutes? Because they're touching.
You gotta.
Yeah, there's a, everybody's in class right there, sitting in front of John and Dan there.
Oh, that's important.
Too good as it goes.
And he's the next person, share your comments. And again, if things do get disruptive, if someone starts corrupting the situation, or if someone's making the situation unsafe in this room, you can tell that person, the public comment period is over. If you need to call public safety, guys totally, hopefully it doesn't ever come to that, but if you guys need to, don't be afraid to ask for it.
Do you notice, have you seen other boards or commissions do their public comment differently? Where you have opened up the floor for public comment after each agenda item?
No, no one does that. A lot of communities, what a lot of communities used to do was just have the public comment period at the end of the meeting. And that was a problem. So now, you guys, most communities have done the last few years, is have public comment at the beginning of the meeting, at the end of the meeting. And then some communities that will do this, will have a general public comment period, and then they have a public hearing, you know, the public hearing, I don't know if you like number six on your, on your agenda. They'll have a, they'll open up the public comment period for that item at the beginning of the meeting, which I think is, I don't know, I've only seen one community do that, and I think it does lead to some confusion. Because a lot of times, when people, when we get to that agenda item, a lot of public thinks, this is my time, I have my public comment period, and then they're going, oh, no, that was at the beginning of the meeting. So I would say, I would recommend keeping a public comment period with the agenda item that has the public hearing. I think that works best.
So you would have three in the meeting, you would have the beginning one, which is general, the one, then the public hearing, and then the one at the end.
And if, and if someone at the beginning for the general comments is speaking about the public hearing, I think that's fine.
Are they allowed three minutes in each section?
I would keep it always consistent. Unless they have spokespersons, they're pretty built, spokesperson's time. Any comments, questions?
I have one. When months have gone by and we have a Iowa paper as this big, is there like a general shredding day or something that, because I'm going to say a lot of people's personal statement. You know, what do we, how long are we, should we keep our documents? I know there's intention, rules and stuff for documents. What do you recommend from a planning person to keep their documents so they can give?
I would defer to your administration or your legal.
We just have nine sets of plans, we all have them, so we're also people that need to report to the board. I don't want to just throw away, it's not just stuff on it.
Ever since I've been, Russo's under his own board appeals, and I've been the county board, was the board, rep of management, checking very badly.
Oh, my gosh. It's been my experience, it's been my experience that one of the gentlemen, the gentleman who served as secretary of the planning commission for more years than, than, he was the record keeper. He kept every record as secretary, every site plan, every agenda. So if Dan would like to, hey, well, let me finish, let me finish. If you would like to take your packet of all the information that I give to all of you each month, we can make an archive here at the office. But I cannot make copies, you have them. And if you are willing to relinquish them, I will take them and I will keep them here in an archive file. Because I know that you have a family and you work, but, you know, this gentleman was not married, he was home, and he had time to read. So that's, that's really who I think we count on, that's your duty as secretary, so you're the record keeper.
So you give us a packet, like a site plan packet, isn't there one where you have to care?
No. Tell us your packet record of all the application items received.
In each individual file.
As a commission, I don't know what your requirements are for record keeping. I'm going to say, you don't have any requirements for record keeping. Because you're just storing them personally at the house.
And it's, you know, because the master is with you guys.
Each application, each applicant has a file.
Okay, so that's why I would say, that might, probably a good legal question. And next time I run to the county attorney to report something, I can just ask her, what's, what's the, is there an expectation? Because to be honest, I would imagine there's not, I don't know.
So if you're fighting in court, just two years later, you don't have the.
The county will track all this stuff.
Yes, we have a file, I'm going to just use John. He made a, he made application, brought it before the planning commission, we have a file, Z L N. Every aspect from the application.
Yeah, so there is a master.
The only thing I don't have is the agendas.
Oh, yeah.
That's it, but.
But it's hard to call the plans.
Each individual.
We don't keep all those people's plans, because there's a master.
There's a file of each individual case that comes before you, yeah.
So I, I have a question. I know there was several comments, discussions regarding, I believe it was the June planning commission meeting, and I almost feel like some of this training might have been prompted by maybe decisions we made or didn't make during that meeting. Is there anything that you see from your side that we either are doing wrong or could be doing better in terms of our process and how we are conducting these planning commission meetings as well as the Z B A votes?
I think it's the public comment period, and that's something that everyone, all communities need, work on. You know, it's hard, because public comment, these are your neighbors, they're not your community. You know, they either, chances are if they're coming to a meeting, they're nervous about something, they're worried about something, because it's affecting where they live and their life. So, you know, public comments, public comments are hard for everyone, and I think that's the toughest thing. I also think, again, you know, just.
This is not, for real, maybe, I mean, no.
You can change.
You're double the technology.
You know, I'd say that if I were a planning commission and I was, before my meetings, I would probably just look at, you know, what is the review process and do we have any liberal room on stuff? Because some of this stuff, does the planning commission may weigh this, or, you know, there are certain things you have to cover and modify, if someone wants to deviate, you really gotta vote as a B A. You know, I've seen some planning, I can't think of anything here, but I've seen some planning commission for plans approve something, and it's like, they did it, they glanced at it before, and so they didn't do that, so they didn't do that. They really should have gone, they, they should have deviated the Z B A, because now this is just kind of a code enforcement issue. So, you know, that's something else I see, and again, you know, my reports and the attorney's opinions.